Reverend Brian Sharp.
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you tonight and we thank you so much for your love that supersedes our understanding on every day of our lives. And Father, we thank you for your word that says blessed is the nation. And we can also say community, Lord, whose God is the Lord and the people he chose for his inheritance. From heaven, the Lord looks down and sees all mankind. From his dwelling place, he watches all who live on earth. He who forms the hearts of all, who considers everything they do. No king is saved by the size of his army. No warrior escapes by his great strength. We thank you, Father, that you don't miss a thing. We thank you, Lord, you're, you not only watch over us, you examine our hearts. And I pray that you will help us all, Father, to, to work with pure motives, Lord, knowing that, Father, you do see all and, and Father, you honor those who work with pure motives. And I, I just pray for your blessing upon this city council, Father. And I just pray that you will help them to make the decisions that are, that are righteous, that are in line with your word, that are for the betterment of, of, of our entire community, Father, because we know that you love Papa Bluff and we love Papa Bluff as well. So lead and guide each and every, each and every council person, Father. Your word also says, Father, that we are encouraged and exhorted to pray for those, where to give all requests, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving that be made for everyone, but especially for kings and all those in authority that may, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives and all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth, Father. We thank you, Lord, that, that you have exhorted us to pray for our leaders, so we do so, Father. And Father, if we just ask, to what end, to what end are we to pray? And we are to pray, Father, for an orderly society where Jesus Christ, where you are Lord, and we are to pray for our leaders that they rule righteously. And Father, the final end is that we are to pray that people are giving their lives for Jesus Christ and living by the truth of your word. And I thank you, Father, that there are many in our city, Father, that do that and our, that's their motives. And I pray, Lord, that you will help us all to keep our eyes upon you. So guide the, guide the council, Father, as they make important decisions that affect many people. And may all of our motives be pure. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Sharp. Roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Brannum. Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here. Six votes. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Moving forward. Workshop items for discussion. Item A, the city council will review a budget amendment for the street department for the purchase of snowplows and a salt bin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In preparation for our winter time, I felt like it was better to be in a position of proactiveness versus reactiveness, like where we found ourselves last year. And so this year, I've asked Jeremy to come forth with some proposals for your consideration tonight in regards to adding the necessary snowplow packages onto existing trucks and then also to get the proper masonry to start creating our own salt barns. So I'll turn the word to Jeremy.
You got your having your packet of the estimates that we received on both of your items. If you guys do approve this, we'll put it out for bid and hopefully we can have it all ready for wintertime this year. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Is this item going on, on existing trucks?
Do what next?
Is this going on the existing trucks?
Yes. They have a universal mount, so if we do upgrade trucks down the road, there is no additional cost. It'll bolt right onto the same trucks we get.
Okay. Are we going to mount them ourselves or are they going to come in?
Yes, we're going to mount them.
Thank you.
These are not bids. You say you'll go out for bids.
We'll have to put out our specs for bids. These were quotes that we got for these. These were for budget numbers that I was getting.
If there's not any further questions or comments, do we have a motion to move this to the voting session tonight?
I'll make a motion when we move this to the voting session tonight.
I'll second.
Motion is second to move item A to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council will discuss a proposed resolution authorizing the city manager to be included as a signee on signature cards on municipal utilities' bank accounts. Mr. Kaplan.
This is just a cleanup item from last meeting. We just, it was an oversight that we didn't include the enterprise bank counts and so we're bringing it back just to make sure we have that for consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Make a motion to move it to voting session tonight.
Second.
Motion is second to move item B to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will review change order number two on the walk trail Phase Two project, job number P-130023.
Change order was included in the packet at this time. Does entertain any questions that you may have at this time?
Was this for area not anticipated?
Dominic Thompson, Smith and Company, 901 Vine. The change order is actually a deduction. This is a final change order for this project. At the end of the project, we go out and do a final inspection and determine that there was excess sidewalk that was actually part of the project that should not have been in the project. So this deduction takes that into account, so.
Are you saying that we're saving money instead of?
Absolutely.
These are the nice change orders you like to see. Not the other way around.
That's pretty wonderful. I like these ones.
Part of our requirements moving forward, right? Must require a change order for bringing down our cost.
I think this is the first one I've seen like this. All right. Okay. Do I have a motion to move this to the voting session tonight?
I'll make a motion to move it to voting session.
I'll second.
Motion is second to move item C to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will discuss the selection of a bidder on the Shelby Road Canal Boulevard intersection for signalization relative to project number is STP-5102003. Mr. Kaplan. Dominic.
Yeah, Dominic. Sorry to say.
We recently put out the bid, the Shelby Road and Canal Boulevard intersection project. There were two respective bidders. One was Fratner Burger. The other was KJAC Contractors. The apparent low bidder is Fratner Burger for 300, these are approximate amounts, 330,000. KJAC was the second low bidder at 336,000. We are recommending approval of the bid for Fratner Burger for 330,000.
If I might add one item, Madam Mayor, the question that would come up is why wouldn't this be applicable to our current ordinance regarding local preference? Because this would be within a very slim margin, as you can see. These are MoDOT funds that are being utilized, which falls under their criteria for which bids are secured and which lowest qualified bidder on these types of projects. So anything further to add on that piece?
No, I think that covers it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I also received some calls about that same thing and told them it didn't fall within those perimeters. But I assured them that the council was very well aware of the spirit of that ordinance that the council passed and how beneficial that would be to the community because they said, one person said, well, like 90 to 95 percent of those employees live within the county and spend roughly the same amount of money back into the community. And I said, we're aware of that and that's why that ordinance was passed. And whenever we can, we will try to do that if it works out.
What is the difference?
$6,000.
$6,000 and one is local and one's not?
Right.
Where's the, where's the one that's not local from?
Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge, yes. So around Cape.
On this particular project, do you foresee a possibility of a change order or cost overrun going on this?
I do not at this time, no.
Okay.
Do we do reference checks on this apparent low bidder yet?
Fratner Burger actually is doing work in town already in the city of Papa Bluff. I think they're actually working in the Eight Points project.
And how's their work been?
They do a very good job.
Okay.
Did you say in MoDOT requires this?
Low bid. Lowest qualified bid. Yeah, I agree. In this case, my, $6,000, I'd rather see the money stay local myself. But again, I don't want to get us in jeopardy of losing MoDOT funding in the future either. What we'll do, just to confirm, which I know it's the case, but we'll confirm with Elquinn that we don't have the discretion to go towards the local provider, given such a small margin. And then I can report back as to what my findings were, but I'm pretty sure MoDOT's going to hold their, to the line here.
So this would be to the voting session November 3rd, is that correct? Oh, October 20th. My, my, my thought is that I would prefer to see it go local, especially if it's $6,000 difference. That's a quite a, quite a large chunk of money that could go local.
Well, I agree. I will, I'll confirm before your voting session is to make sure that there isn't any discretion that can be applied. But I'm pretty sure they'll hold to the guideline, but in case they don't, that's why I'm going to ask anyways, just to make sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions for me?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion when we move this to the voting session October 20th after Mr. Kaplan gives us his recommendations.
Okay. Motion is second to move item D to the voting session October 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss an amendment to the code of ordinances, chapter 430, entitled Planting, Maintenance, and Removal of Trees, Shrubs, and Other Plants Relative to the Maintenance of Trees. Someone here to speak on this?
No, I can, no, I can address most of it and of course, we can go from there once, see if we have any questions. So thank you, Madam Mayor. So the city of Papa Bluff, as we all know, is named after the poplar tree. And so in the spirit of, of that heritage, we want to be able to protect the assets of the trees that are within the city limits. Right now, there is no applicable code that protects those trees. And as such, there's been trees that have been hundreds of years old that have been removed for no reason. These were healthy trees that weren't in threat of dying or destroying anything. They were just chopped down for convenience. And, you know, as we move forward with our, you know, as our policies of trying to not only, one, build roads, you know, replace the gravel roads, but we also want pedestrian, pedestrian right of ways to be able to provide a friendly outside environment. And then also, we need trees to live. And the last thing we want to see is trees that either be butchered or destroyed needlessly. And so I think a, a ordinance for your consideration is in order for consideration, like I said, to protect the, the investment of these trees that have been here a lot longer than us. Some would say they have more right to be here than us. And so this, this, like I said, this ordinance, this proposed ordinance protects those trees. It sets standards for how we deal with them moving forward. It also creates an advisory board that can work with staff if there, you know, if you don't, if they don't have the answers as to what to do with a particular tree, that's what this advisory board will do. And I think it, it creates, I think, a good working relationship with members of our, of our community and the protection of our assets.
Now, on this advisory board, will they be able to, are they going to try to work in a timing? Because I know that some of these pruning or these cutbacks are done on a scheduled basis.
Correct.
Are they going to be in symmetry or synchronization with that kind of a scheduling?
No, but, but that's why we have a staff person that's designated to advise in regards to the pruning. We have in our Parks Department, an individual that's already been identified, that would be the point person. The advisory board would be involved, just no differently than other advisory boards, for more policy direction and/or strategic direction moving forward.
So will, then with regards to that, will be, will there be a, can there be a stay even acted on, on a trimming? Or, you know, what I'm asking is on a timeline basis, how will that work in a timeline? Because I know that the, the city Electric and Power, you know, have a really good rating for not many outages because they keep the trimming back. So you got to balance that with, with the trees, and I understand that. But, so what I'm asking is if they have something scheduled to be trimmed, then it becomes a concern or debate whether this needs to be done or that needs to be done. Is that going to be able to stave that activity until the board can look at it or what?
No, like the way that this process that I see, I'd see moving out is, let's say, we've hired a contractor to trim and prune our trees. Again, they would work with the staff person that's available. If that person's unavailable, I would be available. And of course, you know, hopefully the members that would volunteer for this committee would make themselves available in case of any question that came up as well. As I foresee it with, with, with the day of technology where we're at today, most people are available via text or cell phone or other methods. But I'd make sure either myself, our staff, or be available, but we work in close conjunction with the advisory board to make sure we're protecting our trees.
Agree with that. We was at the municipal utilities, we had a lengthy discussion about this yesterday in the meeting, and I think it's very well needed.
Well, and again, the utilities are doing a good job of, of doing what their job is, is making sure the lights stay on.
Right.
And, and I applaud them for those efforts because as, as, as the mayor, Protem, indicated, we've got a very good track record. However, there, there is a balance here. Again, I think our, our trees and which, and again, this wasn't our electric department that did this. We hired a contractor, but the way our trees have been butchered in some areas is just, it's not aesthetically pleasing, one, and two, it's going to kill the tree. And, and again, it's, there's just, there's a better way of accomplishing its same task, making sure we're at a state of readiness, make sure our, our electric customers are still getting the great quality of service they receive today with, also maintaining the health of our trees. There's, there's a healthy balance here, and that's what this ordinance gets us on the right footing towards.
Thank you. I like that.
And we'll work closely with the electric department to make sure, because again, in case of emergency, that's a whole different ballgame. You know, but, but again, this ordinance is in place, one, to make sure there's something on the, on the books that protects these trees, one. And two, it provides guidance moving forward. Right now, it's, it's a free for all with contractors that come in here and just remove trees. We've also got trees, I don't know if you're aware of, that are being removed on private property at the expense of the utilities. I think that practice needs to come to a close. If someone, you know, if, if someone wants a tree removed from their own property, that should be the expense of that particular homeowner, in my opinion. And so now, you're probably thinking, well, Heath, well, you know, on the road thing, you don't want to pay, well, that's a different story. You know, trees, you know, is landscaping and it's also, you know, it's, it's personal preference on how people take care of their trees on their own property. Road in their hand, you need that for life and safety reasons to get into work and the hospital and all that good stuff. But here, I just don't think we should be in the practice of removing trees on people's private property. I just don't think it's a good practice.
I make a motion that we move this to voting session. You got them?
Section 450, 4350, section 80, item G. I'm trying to understand, it says no street tree other than those species referred to herein as small trees may be planted under or within 10 linear feet. Does that mean that other trees can be planted within 10 feet?
Yeah, if they're not going to reach the power lines, there, that's not an issue. You're talking within the utility line right of way, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you get a.
So is there something that restricts from planting?
We just don't, yeah, we don't want people planting trees within the right of way if it's just going to end up growing into the lines anyways.
But 10 feet doesn't seem to be very far.
That's part of the old ordinance, though.
But you're talking five, let's hear.
You're saying everything in red is going to be taken out?
Everything in red.
No, everything in red is added.
Added. Everything else is what was already there.
That says within 10 feet, that doesn't sound like very far. I mean, a tree could easily grow up.
I have a question.
Sure. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Joan Howcomb, 604 West Victor. I have a large catalpa tree in my front yard that the city has butchered and darn near killed. It's too late to save the tree, and it would cost me $2,000 to take down. So if the city no longer removes the damage they've done, I'm stuck with a semi-dead tree. So I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Sure. No, in those, in those case scenarios, I mean, I, my advice to the council, of course, then they'll remake those decisions. If the tree's dead, you know, and we, but if we, if we killed it, that's one thing. I think we can handle those on a case-by-case situation. But if it's not dead and it just doesn't look pretty, which I've seen those.
What I heard you say was that you will no longer remove the trees.
We won't.
And this one?
In this case, let's say, we'll just have to handle those in a case-by-case situation.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I've had more complaints about tree trimming this year. So do we have a motion?
So item G, I'm sorry, Peter, did I answer your question on item G?
I didn't. It doesn't seem like, to me, 10 feet is very far away from power lines to plant a tree. Maybe it'll be at least 25, 50 feet something.
We'll verify that with utilities to make sure it's the, you know, to see, make sure this is acceptable, but.
And then if we wanted to change that, you'd have to amend the ordinance, right?
Right. And we just changed that one little section.
I just think that needs to be larger figured.
I'll look into that and I'll report back.
Jack made a motion. I'll go in, I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion and a second to move item E to the voting session October 20th?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the action required items. Bill number 7733, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an STP urban program agreement between the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the city of Papa Bluff to resurface various streets.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7733. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff to execute a STP urban program agreement between the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to resurface various streets in the city.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7733. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff to execute a STP urban program agreement between the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to resurface various streets in the city.
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Sorry, let me, before, any comments or questions on that issue first? Okay, roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Bill number 7734, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation Commission relative to the use of the municipal utilities' general manager's electronic signature for permits.
Move for first reading, bill number 7734.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7734. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff to execute an agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the general manager of the municipal utilities department to use an electronic signature for permits.
Make a motion. We read the second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of 7734. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff to execute an agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the general manager of the municipal utilities department to use an electronic signature for permits.
Move for adoption. Bill number 7734.
Motion is second for adoption. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Bill number 7735, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating a portion of an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and John D. and Roberta J. Duncan and Jan Aaron and Scott R. Hicks.
Move for first reading of bill number 7735.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7735. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and Roberta J. Duncan, Jan Aaron, and Scott R. Hicks.
Make a motion for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7735. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance vacating an easement between the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and Roberta J. Duncan, Jan Aaron, and Scott R. Hicks.
Move for adoption of bill number 7735.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley. Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Bill number 7736, the city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning the property from RS-3 Central Area Residential to R-2 Residential Apartment for future multifamily development for property located at 432 Highway 53.
Move for first reading of bill 7736.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 7736. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance rezoning property from RS-3 Central Area Residential to R-2 Residential Apartment for future multifamily development located at 432 Highway 53 Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7736. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In ordinance rezoning property from RS-3 Central Area Residential to R-2 Residential Apartment for future multifamily development located at 432 Highway 53 Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Make a motion to adopt 7736.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Bill number seventy-seven thirty-seven, the city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from CX-three Central Commercial Mixed Use to M-one Light Industrial to consolidate zoning with the property contiguous to West for property located at four one five South Broadway Street.
Move for first reading, bill number seventy-seven thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of seven-seven three-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance rezoning property from CX-three Central Commercial Mixed Use to M-one Light Industrial to consolidate zoning with the property contiguous to the West located at four fifteen South Broadway, Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading for seven-seven three-seven.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of seven-seven three-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance rezoning property from CX-three Central Commercial Mixed Use to M-one Light Industrial to consolidate zoning with the property contiguous to the West located at four fifteen South Broadway, Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Seven-seven three-seven.
Motion is second to adopt. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Bill number seven-seven three-eight, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the budget for the street department for fiscal year twenty-fourteen to include the purchase of snowplows and a salt bin.
Move for first reading, bill number seven-seven three-eight.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of seven-seven three-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance amending the two thousand fourteen fiscal year budget for the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and municipal utilities department.
Move for second reading?
Second.
It's a, I'm sorry, it should be Streets Department.
Yes, it should be. Sorry.
Motion for second reading is amended.
Motion is second for second reading is amended of bill number seventy-seven thirty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance amending the two thousand fourteen fiscal year budget for the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and the municipal street department.
Move for adoption, bill number seventy-seven thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption. Any comments or questions? All I have to say is we better do this, otherwise you all weren't here last year. We had a lot of phone calls.
Well, you know, we hope the need doesn't arise. We have to use it, but to have it there is going to be a big, big help.
Alright. Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Resolution number eighteen oh nine, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the city manager to be included on a sign, as a signee on signature card on the municipal utilities' bank accounts.
Move for first reading? Eighteen oh nine.
Motion is second for reading of eighteen oh nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution authorizing certain officers and employees of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and the municipal utilities department, the signatories on the municipal utilities department's bank accounts, and investments for the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption, resolution eighteen oh nine.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of eighteen oh nine. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
No.
Councilwoman Abshir.
No.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes. Moving on to item HH, the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law, section, section six one oh point oh two one point one, RSMO, relative to litigation, six one oh point oh two one point two, RSMO, relative to real estate, and six one oh point oh two one point three, RSMO, relative to personnel.
Motion moving to closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion is second to move in a closed session after a city manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kaplan?
Well, I'm first of all happy to report that the St. Louis Cardinals won the game, so happy St. Louis Cardinals. I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. I had to check the score real quick.
I'm sure there's a lot of people that want to know that.
And so, but other than that, Madam Mayor, unless there's any specific question, I don't have anything specific to report today.
We do have a high school cheerleading squad that for the second year in a row has won the state championship. Just want to report that. Congratulations to them.
Yes, that's very good.
I'd like to go back to his comment. He said you're happy for that. We're making a Cardinal fan out of you.
Well, since the Trey Tigers got swept, yes, I'm now a Cardinals fan.
You're not a Cardinals fan?
I'm a Cardinals fan, I mean, yeah.
Alright.
For the rest of this year, anyway, right?
For this year. I'd hope, I'm hoping to see a Kansas City Royal, St. Louis Cardinal, World Series. I'd be kind of neat to see.
Alright. Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.